It will be the sixth attempt, but I think most people expect today that the House is not going to reach a quorum. They have, they've come close, but they don't expect it to happen. I think the most likely scenario today is they won't reach quorum and then the House will adjourn their special session and then the Texas Senate will go into session and adjourn the first special session as well. And then Governor Abbott has said he's going to call for that second special session to start immediately and then this process of trying to pass bills will start all over again. And I should point out, Ken, while the House has not been able to reach quorum, the Texas Senate has, and they have passed all of the agenda items on Governor Abbott's list for the special session. So we're not just talking about the congressional map, but we're also talking about flooding, the response to the deadly floods that we saw in central Texas, plus more property tax relief efforts, also eliminating the STAR test, eliminating taxpayer-funded lobbying. So they've had a lot of accomplishments in the Senate, certainly not in the House.
Jack, let's talk about what happened yesterday because yesterday the Democratic Caucus, they put out a couple of demands, if you will, or conditions, depending on how you're reading into what they put out, saying if these conditions are met, then we will return. And perhaps seeing as those conditions have not been met yet so far, is indicating that you, they will not have quorum today. But those two conditions, talking about having, first of all, California, you know, offset, offset the seats that they would lose in Texas by redistricting in California and finding five Democratic seats. And the other one, of course, was that the special session come to an end. Talk to me a little bit about that and sort of the reaction that you have heard from lawmakers in Austin about these demands.
Well, the House Democrats believe that they have a victory, at least, at least right now, in the sense that it's temporary because they know they've got to come back here and these, the Republicans are going to pass the maps here in Texas. So the reason that they consider this a victory is that they were able to delay it enough to get other states like California to introduce legislation there to increase their maps. And I can tell you, there was a report out by Politico that shows that California has redrawn their maps to give Democrats nine new seats. So basically, all the Republican seats that they have in California, the Democrats would seek to eliminate all of them. And so now I'm wondering and waiting to see if Texas ups its ante as well. But I did speak with House Democratic Caucus Chairman Jean Wu yesterday about this, and I tried to really pinpoint him on exactly when they will return. Take a listen.
And when we go back, it will be on our terms. We will go back when we decide to go back, not when Governor Abbott tells us to go back. We listen to our people, we listen to our allies, and we work together to try to save the American dream and to save Texans. And our decision to go back is going to be no different.
And so the other thing I think, you know, because I asked him, hey, are you going to go back Friday? You're going to go back Saturday? You're going to go back Sunday? Monday? He's like, we know when we're coming back, but we're not disclosing that. So, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a guessing game here, either later today or this throughout the weekend, when they will show up. I also asked him about this lawsuit by Governor Abbott and by the Texas Attorney General's office to remove him and 12 other House Democrats from office. And, you know, in the legal argument, Governor Abbott said, and he told me this when we spoke with him earlier this week, that the Democrats have abandoned their office, they vacated their office because, in a sense, they should not be allowed to dictate how the majority governs. They should not be able to, in a sense, hold hostage the legislative session. And so I asked Wu about this, and I asked if, because of the fact that they're not disclosing when they'll return, they say they'll return on their terms, on their timetable, if he's not actually playing into the governor's legal hands. Let's take a look.
I don't know how to break it to Governor Abbott. But despite the fact that he personally appointed most of the Supreme Court justices in the Texas Supreme Court, they're not going to do what he's going to want. Because what they would have to do is ignore the law, ignore the Constitution, that both say that, that quorum breaking is a part of the process, is a legislative tool. They would have to ignore their own words when the Supreme, Texas Supreme Court said that quorum breaking is an accepted tool in the legislative process.
So I think this is going to be very interesting because the Texas Supreme Court will probably rule on this sometime next month. Both sides have a chance to submit all their legal briefs through September 4th, and so we'll see what happens. And the governor said that while the Texas Constitution enables them to break quorum and not show up, but obviously, he said, they, he doesn't believe that it enabled them to just go off and not show up at all. And so I think it's going to be interesting to see where the Supreme Court comes down on this. And, you know, it's probably going to take us through next month. But the governor believes that if, in fact, the Supreme Court rules his way, this will end quorum breaking.
Jack, I want to talk a little bit about some polling that took place recently. Emerson College polling 1,000 registered voters. I think you, you were, you also have that information in front of you. Because there's something here that I wanted to bring up. You know, a lot has been made of the governor's orders to civilly arrest some of these Democrats who are in the state of Texas, who are not in the Capitol right now. He's saying, of course, that they're being derelict of their duties and that they have a duty to be inside there. And essentially sending DPS troopers, we know now, to even the homes of some of these Democratic lawmakers to compel them to come back. One of the interesting polls in that, in that Emerson College polling study there, they asked people if House Democrats who broke quorum should be arrested. 41% said they agree, 31, 37% said they disagree, and 22% said they're neutral. There isn't an overwhelming amount of polling that suggests one way or the other. It seems like people in the state are pretty split on that specific effort to arrest them, to bring them back. What do you make of all of that?
Yeah, I think, you know, people have been paying attention in Texas, according to this poll. I think it's pretty, it's pretty close, obviously, when you look at the results there. The poll also asked about where people are on these new congressional maps that give the Republicans a five-seat majority, an additional five seats. And it's pretty split there. 36% said they support, 38% said they oppose, 26% said they were unsure. And then they were also asked in a slightly different manner, and there was a slightly different result, whether they agree with President Trump's statement, who essentially said that Republicans in Texas are entitled to get five more seats. And in this way, 40% agreed with that, 38% disagreed with that, and 22% said they were neutral. So I do think that's interesting. I think, you know, a lot of people really, they don't know. Some of them, while they have been paying attention, they're just unsure about this. We really are in uncharted territory.
Right.
While this is, redistricting mid-decade is allowed, according to the courts, we haven't really seen it. And so I think people are still trying to figure this out. I did talk to a Republican legislator yesterday, Nate Chatzline of Fort Worth, just to respond to the Democrats and their demands or conditions. Take a listen to what he had to tell me.
I find it hilarious that they're trying to put demands on us. Look, I've been saying this from the very beginning, there is no deals to be made. We are going to pass President Trump's one big, beautiful map, whether they like it or not. It's, it's not a matter of, you know, if we pass it, it's when. And, and the reality is, is I think Texans are seeing right through their play right now. We've got to...
And so I think it's, it's interesting because of what's going on in California. Now Republicans, and Governor Abbott told me earlier this week, that they're looking at increasing that number instead of five more GOP majority seats, increasing that to eight, nine, maybe even 10, to respond to California. And the other thing that Representative Chatzline told me is that he would like the governor to add on the call, redrawing Texas House maps. And because right now, they only need about 12 seats to get to a supermajority. And if they have a supermajority, then they don't need to worry about Democrats breaking quorum. So let's take a listen to what Nate Chatzline had to say about that.
I think there's no better way to get Democrats back in the state of Texas than for us to start some redistricting efforts in the Texas House. I know some really vulnerable seats, like Mahala Pless's seat in Collin County, that we should be looking at and seeing how we turn that into a Republican seat. And there's more just like her seat. Nothing's off the table. It's time to take action now.
And so we're going to see what happens right after they try to enter session here and have a quorum at 10 o'clock, Ken. How quickly the governor releases his agenda for the second special session, whether that is going to be a part of it. And certainly, if it is, that's going to really up the ante
Yeah.
to get back at the Democrats. And I think what we have seen, you know, the Republicans really throw every tool they can to try to incentivize the Democrats to come back.
And Jack, we're getting real close, so we'll, we'll cut out and we'll get to the House floor here in a bit. But just before I let you go, it's interesting to point out that Representative Jasmine Crockett, you also spoke with her. She's already talking about running for a different district. And I think that's, that's a clear indicator that the Democrats are expecting that they, that they will lose five seats whenever this happens.
Yes. And when, yeah, and when I spoke with Congresswoman Crockett the other day up in Dallas, she actually said that she thinks these Republican maps will pass. And you know, there are three congressional districts that where Democrats hold the seats in North Texas. Under these maps, there'll be two. And so I asked her about where she's going to run, and she said that she's, she's considering going to a different district because she was drawn out of her district, which is the 30th congressional district.
Yeah.
Her home would be in the new 33rd congressional district. So I think she and Congressman Mark VC, and then also Congresswoman Julie Johnson are going to have a lot of talking to do about what their next steps will be.
Yeah. Jack, I think we're going to talk a whole lot more here in a bit, but right now, we want to go ahead and take a live look at the House floor. We understand it is already 10 o'clock. So at any moment now, we're expecting Speaker Dustin Burrows there will take to the podium there. We're going to hear the gavel, and we're going to hear the roll call, and we will see. Again, there is no expectation that they will have quorum again, but let's have a listen.
The House will come to order. Members, strict enforcement has been requested on roll call by Representatives Canales, Cortez, Mary Gonzalez, Legoria, Martinez, Moody, Eddie Morales, Munoz, and Raymond. You must register from your desk, and you may not register for any other member. Clerk, ring the bell. There being 95 members present, a quorum is not present. The House and gallery please rise for the invocation, which will be offered by Furman Carpenter, DPS chaplain.
Let us pray. Our most wonderful heavenly Father, we are so blessed. Thank you for letting us live in these great United States. Thank you so much, Father, for the state of Texas. And Father, thank you that we all have the privilege to vote, Father, and the honor to vote. We thank you for each of our elected officials. We thank you for their families, Father, for what they do, for their great love for the state of Texas, for their love for the constituents, Father. And we ask you to continue to be with them and bless them as they represent them and represent Texas. Father, please give them the, an extra measure of wisdom and, and understanding each situation that they face, Father. Please give them a knowledge of each situation. Father, we ask you to continue to be with the, the special session and help it, Father, help us to do the right things. And Father, please be with those that are here today. In it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Chair, recognize the Honorable Ryan G. to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas flags.
Thank you, members. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America, to the true republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with justice for all.
On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
Schofield, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Does a member have to be present to make a motion of the House?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Were all of the members who made the motion for strict enforcement here today?
I'll have to check the journal, Mr. Schofield.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Members, we are about to receive a motion to signee die. Do not go very far, as I believe our governor will be calling us back for another special session very, very soon. Mr. Guerin moves at the House of Representatives of the first-called session of the 89th Legislature, stand adjourned, signee die. Is there objection? Chair, here is none. House stands adjourned, signee die.
So we are having a look right now at the very latest here inside of the House floor at the Texas Capitol in Austin. Once again, sixth attempt to have quorum, and the quorum was not met during this first special session. 95 members present. Of course, you need 100 for quorum. We did expect that this was going to happen. But what we expect also will happen next is exactly what Governor Abbott had said would happen, is that if they did not have quorum today, that the special session, the first one, would be quickly adjourned, and the second session would start almost immediately here. We did hear Speaker Burrows speaking at the podium and addressing the members of the House that were present, saying, do not go too far. He believes that the governor will ask them to begin the second session very, very soon, were his words. Jack Fink, standing by. Jack, this is exactly what we thought was going to happen here today. Still no quorum, 95 members though. Not much has changed from the previous five attempts.
Yeah, I mean, no surprise here. There was certainly no incentive for Democrats to all of a sudden show up at the end of the session, when they were really saying their messaging was that, hey, we're going to kill this first special session. They did that. One thing that's going on in the Senate is they're going to adjourn signee die as well here very shortly. And I'm waiting, watching my phone, just to see when the governor is going to be sending out a news release that, you know, calls them back into the special session for number two, and outline his agenda. You know, he said they're going to be the exact same bills before, but he may add some, and so that's what we're waiting to see. I'm hoping to get one of the lawmakers to come out here and do a live interview with us. Hopefully, that'll be happening here shortly, Ken.
Yeah. Jack, while we wait on that, and I'm sure your phone's going to start blowing up here at some point here, you're going to need to start taking some messages
Hopefully.
from your contacts. Yeah, they'll, they'll get back to you. Let's, let's pick up where we left off before the, the first gavel here and the roll call. We were talking about Congresswoman Jasmine Crockett's intention to perhaps run in a different district. Again, an indicator that they anticipate that they will lose the five seats, at least the five seats. And I think everyone understands at this point, it's not a matter of if this is going to happen, it's a matter of when. It could happen now during the second session if, in fact, the, the Democrats come back. But you did have an opportunity to speak to her as well and to get her take on that. What, what all did she have to say to you about this? Because again, it just seems like right now, at this point, it's, it's just a continuing stall. But at some point, we are expecting that the Democrats will, will come back, that there will be quorum, and that in fact, all indicators right now, Jack, is that they will lose the five seats.
Yes. And I think, you know, right now, of course, we'll have to keep in mind to see if there are going to be more, if the Republicans change the maps even more and add more congressional seats because of what California is doing. And so there's been talk about this for the last week. Instead of five, there could be six, seven, eight, nine, or even 10 new GOP seats. So we'll have to wait and see what happens. But in my conversation with Congresswoman Jasmine Crockett earlier in the week, she said, look, she knows that Republicans are going to pass it. They have the votes. The Democrats cannot stay out forever. And again, just before we showed people the session today, we were talking about why she is considering running for the neighboring district, the 33rd congressional district, instead of the 30th, which she is in now. And that's because the, her home has been drawn out of her current district. So let's take a listen to what she had to tell me, and then we'll come back, right, right back.
I'm debating about whether or not I would run where they put me, which is where I live. Yeah.
In 33.
In 33. But I think we need to explore all the options to make sure that hopefully we're returning those experienced members to Congress and minimizing the risk of, you know, for all I know, in this new 200,000 crop, there's five or six people that are thinking, you know, this is what I want to run in. Now, whether or not they'd be effective at getting at the other 500,000 is a whole other question. But there's a lot of questions to be answered.
And so Congresswoman Crockett told me she really does not want to move from her current home. And under the Constitution, members of Congress do not have to live in the districts in which they serve. They have to be a resident of their state. And obviously, she is. And so now she said that she's going to have to talk to her constituents to see if they would mind her being out of the district, or if she's going to move, whether she's going to actually serve in the 33rd congressional district. So we are, you know, waiting to see what she does. She says she wants to talk to her fellow members of Congress as well. I do want to bring in a live interview now. We have State Representative Shelley Luther. How are you? Republican of Tom Bean up in Grayson County.
Yes.
So first, if you can talk with us, what's your reaction to the fact that first special session is done? Democrats say that's what they wanted to do.
You know, that was in the books to do that anyway, and that, that's fine. They can say whatever they want to say, but when the session, when the second session starts, there should be fireworks.
And, well, what kind of fireworks?
I'm not the speaker, so I don't know, but I see the suggestions floating around as far as losing seniority, losing privileges.
Vice chairmanships?
Chairmanships, budget money, all, all sorts of things. You know, and we're not even sure that they're going to show up this afternoon, at noon, for the special session.
So that's when you're hearing the second special session will start at noon today?
Governor Abbott just announced that it's going to be at noon today.
Okay.
And we're not even sure that they're going to come for that, which honestly, I'm okay with that, because that's when, you know, you have to draw the line somewhere as a parent. You have, when you give consequences and you tell them, you better be, better come back, or else, then you better have the, or else. So let's do it.
How is this playing out as far as your constituents? Have you heard from them at all about this?
Oh, yeah. My, my constituents are extremely upset, mad, honestly, that they are not doing their job, that they were elected to do. And throwing a hissy fit, honestly, when they know they're eventually going to come back, just come back and do the job that you were elected to do.
And so you talked about some of the things before that we could see. I'm waiting to get a news release from the governor's office about the agenda. Have you heard that the governor is going to expand the number of items on these, in the second special session yet?
I have heard that.
And so what new topics do you, are you being told are going to be on there?
Honestly, one of, one of the topics I'm hearing floating around is redistricting that, the state House seats. I'm here for it.
And how many seats? Because right now, Republicans have 88 seats, Democrats have 12. So you're saying that the, the goal there for Republicans is to redraw the Texas House seats so that there could be enough new Republican majority seats to avoid a quorum break by Democrats?
It's very possible. I don't know if we can get to 100, but we can get close enough to where if there's a few Democrats that will not, because we did, we had Democrats from the start that stayed here and did not break the quorum. So if we just had a few along with that, then we can take care of the state's business.
And have you had a chance to speak with those Democratic members who did stay here? And if so, what have they told you about all of this, the situation that they're in?
You know, I, I have spoken to many of them, and, and I hugged them and said, thank you for coming and doing your job. I talked to one of them and said, I know this is hard for you to try to decide. I've been in a very, a similar situation, you know, back in 2020 during COVID, to where you had to make decisions that were, it was bad either way. But I honor the ones and will always be very friendly with the ones that decided to come and work for the people and do the job they said they would do.
You know, the other thing that we have heard during the, the past week from Republican lawmakers, I even talked to the governor earlier this week, and he told me the same thing. There's already been conversations about increasing the number of congressional seats that are GOP majority. Instead of five, which is really what House Bill Four was, there's been talk of increasing that to maybe it's eight, nine, 10. What are you hearing about that?
I've heard the same as you. We, we have the...
And do you support that?
I do.
Why?
I do. Because it should be representative of the state. Whatever the, honestly, I think we should have as many congressional members as we do in the state. That reflects the, the divide of politics in the state. And right now, I think Texas is growingly more Republican, and we, we need to show that in DC as well.
What do you say to Democrats who say, look, we haven't seen mid-decade redistricting before. They believe it's wrong. It's legal, but they believe it's wrong. So what do you say to them? They say they had no choice but to break quorum because their, their constituents want them to do this, and that they are trying to fight back. You say what?
What's ridiculous is they're, they're calling it racist when four of the seats that we're going to flip are Hispanic. They're, they...
They would be Hispanic majority seats.
Yes. Hispanic majority, which is not racist at all. It's just showing who is more MAGA, honestly, and more Republican, and we need to reflect that.
And so how quickly do you think you'll be actually able to reach a quorum in the House? I mean, because we're waiting to see. Are you going to be in session? You know, you'll, they'll try again at noon, but then after that, you know, when will they be? Are you expecting to be here tomorrow, Sunday?
The speaker put out a notice that we should be here through the weekend, but I don't, I don't think that that's a guarantee that we're going to have Democrats here.
So what are you hearing?
I, I'm hearing that it's possible we may not make the quorum in, in this, the noon meeting. I'm hearing it's closer to Monday. But honestly, the, the longer these Democrats stay out, the, the harsher the punishment's going to be, because we just don't have time to mess around, and it's ridiculous. They're going to come back. Just come back already.
And, and when you're talking about the punishments, you're talking about the losing vice chairmanships, that kind of thing, right?
Well, actually, it's not even a punishment. It's losing privileges.
Okay. Like what? What would that be?
Losing vice chairmanships, the budgets. That, that's $5,000 a month they're getting in their budget to be a vice chair. Honestly, I think they should lose seniority. That's not, when you have seniority, you should be a leader. And the leader of the Democrat Party or the caucus right now is acting a fool. He needs to tell his members to come back and take care of business.
And, you know, what do you say, because now, obviously, they think this was a success because they've gotten the attention of these other states, New York and Illinois and California. We saw California Governor Gavin Newsom yesterday have a big news conference. They introduced their bills to, and what I see is a report that says it would give all of the, that turn all of the Republican majority seats in California now, which is nine of them, and give those over to the Democrats. So what's your response to California's governor? They, they basically said, all right, Texas, you're going to do this? We're fighting fire with fire.
You know, they can go ahead and try to do that, and the people of California are moving out en masse because of the way that state is run. My, my mom lives there, a strong conservative Republican. And they already do not represent their state fairly as far as how many Republicans and how many Democrats are in that state. If he wants to make, if he wants to do that, then the people are not surprised. And if our Texas House members are getting fans in those blue states, and if they're so popular there, they should move there.
Anything else you'd like to say that I didn't ask you about?
No, I think you've been, been great.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Shelley Luther. We really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ken, so a couple of things that we have heard right now from Representative Luther. They're going to try again at noon today to gavel in for the start of the second special session. I'm still checking my phone here, and I haven't gotten anything from the governor's office just yet about the agenda items. She said that she heard that the number of items is going to increase. And so we will wait to see if, in fact, the governor is going to ask the House and the Senate to approve new state maps of the House... approve new state maps of the House and potentially the Senate to increase the number of Republican majority seats. The other thing that I think is interesting is at 11:30 this morning, right behind our camera is the governor's office, and the governor is hosting a news conference on an unrelated topic. But obviously, I, and I'm sure other people, are going to be asking him about his new special session agenda items. And, you know, like I said, I'm watching the phone here, waiting to see what they will be.
We're all watching our emails right now, hoping to get that information. Okay, Jack, we're going to go ahead and cut you loose for now, but we will certainly revisit with you a little later on. But again, the headline here is that the special session, the first one, has come to a close, it is adjourned, and we are expecting, all accounts right now pointing that the second special session will begin at noon in just under two hours here. Of course, we've got live team coverage for you throughout Austin and throughout here, back here in DFW as well. You just saw, Jack, we're going to have a whole lot more for you coming up closer to noon on the CBS News Texas stream. We've got more on this redistricting debate. We will see you then. I'm Ken Molestina.